Aloha Maika Ko, you are watching Hawaii Political Reporter.
Aloha and welcome to Hawaii Political Reporter. Thanks for watching. Tonight, a review of the agenda of the next Hawaii County Council meeting, including comments on the recommended appointments and items on the agenda, an update on the continuing state takeover of the county, green cronyism and fracking coming to Hawaii County, yes, you heard right, a review of the Big Island Chronicle, December 2012 issue and its excellent editorial, "Death of a Lifestyle," about Abel Louis and the disenfranchising of native people by the Hawaii government. Then we will debate gun control and talk politics with Pat Pacheco. All right, we start with the Hawaii County Council. It's meeting to be held Wednesday, February 6th at 9:00 a.m. in Hilo at 25 Alpuni Street. And we will just take a few items that interest us and think may be of interest to you. We're going to go on, starting on page two on the communications, 105, 106, and 107. These are relating to appointments and give a little comment on each. First, starting with Lincoln Ashida as Corporation Counsel. This, of course, I'd like to make clear is my opinion. I will also say that it is not complete. I don't have in-depth knowledge and experience with these individuals, but have some. And regarding Lincoln Ashida, my take is that he's a very decent man, certainly quite competent for the job. However, I, having past experience with him, I believe he may be too much of the lawyer for the people's good here in this sense. No doubt, he's competent and very cautious, and my experience has been that he's, errs on the bureaucratic side. And specifically, this is relating to, we were talking about the building code and our ability to amend versus the state code. And he came down very conservatively, which of course would be wise for a attorney to do for his client. But we, through Dominic Yungong, were kind of able to force out of him that what we were trying to do was probably legal or certainly possibly legal. So my only thing with Lincoln that I would ask is that he consider, as he says what he does and he needs to do for the council to give his, you know, sound opinion to protect the, you know, the council and the county, but also state, you know, what he believes is the actual legality of it. Instead of just coming down with a conservative recommendation, basically my, specifically what I'm hoping is that he will give a analysis and a recommendation clearly. And I don't believe we had that. And I do believe, the one thing I can say with Lincoln, and I think most of the mayor's people in general, with an exception which we'll be getting to shortly, they are absolutely bureaucratic and going to be going for the bureaucracy. Now, having said that, the thing that I, and I did spend some time investigating Lincoln because I am a voter in this, you know, county, and I take my vote seriously. And I spent a good amount of time, probably two hours investigating him and, you know, Mitch in the background. And I can tell you, I think Lincoln's actually a very innovative person. He's a nice guy. We've had him a little bit on the show here before, an interview. I mean, he's certainly a great guy. I personally, from, I would love to see him run for council sometime and, you know, get untethered, okay, instead of having to be the, you know, conservative lawyer bureaucrat because I think he's a very smart man and has good ideas. And I based some of this on one of the interviews that I saw him do in a print interview that he filled out for the Hawaii Chamber of Commerce. And going on, one thing in this resolution, I see there's basically a motion to bypass the committee hearings. And this isn't related to Lincoln specifically, this is relating to all of them. And I would question that, not necessarily to do with anyone's character or anything like that, but, you know, if, and this, and I could be wrong, again, I don't know all the things that Jay and Dennis know who signed this, but it seems to me they're probably able to certainly fulfill their job as they're going. And I'm sure everybody wants to get this done with, but it's an opportunity not neg, to be taken negatively. This is an opportunity for the people to hear what they wish to do and for them to listen. And if they truly are going to be public servants, I think the process is important. It's very likely that all these people will be approved and, you know, and they likely should be. But, you know, the process is important and, you know, deferring to what you may know that's greater than me, guys, please consider giving us the full opportunity to do this and not rush these things through. Now, moving on to Warren Lee. Warren Lee and I have spent some time together, and I'm sure neither of us will ever forget it. And Warren Lee is quite an accomplished man also, and certainly a very competent bureaucrat, no doubt about that. Lots of engineering experience, I think a decent guy at heart, very decent guy. And myself personally, having essentially, let's just say in a nice way, been at opposite ends of an issue, you know, because of the building code, I can tell you that Warren is definitely going to stick with the bureaucracy and, you know, do what he believes right for that. And, you know, as I get into the next person, I think you'll see a little bit of a contrast there, which I think could be a nicer approach. As far as running the DPW, if it was truly just the Department of Public Works, I think Warren would be fantastic. And I think the level of concern and such that he has is definitely well taken. My concern is on the building side. I think Warren has a lot of engineering background, which is great, and I respect it and have some, a little bit myself, in a sense. But I think when you're running the building department, to me, it's not a matter of working for the engineers and having that engineer mentality, or for the contractors, certainly not that either. It's for the people in the middle. And I think the problem that Warren Lee, and it's not just him, it's most throughout this country, they're not looking at cost-benefit analysis on these things, and they're just blindly throwing the book at everybody, so to speak, on what is required. And it is just killing us. It is killing us as, you know, consumers, homeowners, businesspeople trying to do business, and contractors. The ones who are benefiting are the big corporations who are pushing these products and standards that are unneeded, and it is hurting the environment and hurting the economy. It really is. So, you know, Warren's certainly a good, honorable, decent man. Again, this is another one I would like to see to have the process go through because, you know, hopefully, being the second time, and Warren, I'm sure, has had probably much more than enough, especially after this term that he'll want, you know, maybe he could have the freedom to perhaps, you know, be a little bit more innovative and receptive on the non-public works side, so to speak, to a little bit more grassroots and public ideas. That's my comment on Warren. And again, nothing to impugn his character. I think he's a very decent man. And I will say one thing which I do like, you know, I think he's got the Hawaiian spirit. At least he'll talk and listen, and you can have some access. Albeit, I must say though, I do think a lot of it is procedural, and Warren is the master of procedure and charm, there's no doubt about that. This, again, is my opinion. I could be wrong, and I defer to those who may know more. Let me know, adjudicate me, as they say, you know, if I'm wrong. I'd like to hear it. Now, moving on to something which is a real pleasure to talk about, and that is Bobby Jean Leated Todd. And I had the pleasure of working with her and Dennis Prashanishi and, you know, Mr. Andrade of the Fire Department and a couple other people, including Neil, which I won't get into that with him. But I gotta tell you, she is wonderful. And this is, again, only one experience, so I could be wrong on the end here, but it certainly seemed to me from that one experience that we have a very balanced, competent, brilliant person there. And I gotta, I really gotta give it to the mayor for this. I really can't honestly say that I love much of what he does, but this is one, I gotta give it to him. He really hit the nail on the head with her. I think she's a great balance, I mean, doing the job for the public and the bureaucracy that she needs to do while being responsive and listening to the people and their needs. And I really, from my experience with her working, this was relating to water tanks for the building, you know, current building code. I think she was great and really struck the balance and very helpful and very open. So that's probably a good choice as far as I know there. Now, moving on to a couple of other things on the council meetings that we have. We have some bills, and it looks like, and I just gotta tell you, I'm really happy to see this, it looks like we have a couple of women there, possibly more, but, you know, two from a casual following that are really starting to look like they're doing the people's business. And it just is just great. One of them is Resolution 45-13, introduced by Ms. Willie. And this urges the 2003, 2013 Hawaii State Legislature to pass Senate Bill Number 1 and House Bill Number 10 to effectively abolish the Public Land Development Corporation, or as I, well, let's say, put it a nice way, the bypass, which the PLDC, I believe, is to bypass the people and eliminate home rule bill. I mean, that with Act 97 are certainly a part of it. So thank you, Ms. Willie, and that's great. Of course, this is only a resolution, and we'd have to fight. I know Senator Rutterman is going to be there trying to do the right thing, so we do have some forces of good working here, there's no doubt about it. And moving on to another one, and this is Bill 23, introduced by Ms. Ford. This is a real people's bill. And I gotta tell you, you know, I've really seen some great things. Honestly, sometimes I've thought Brenda may be too much on the bureaucratic side and such, but, you know, there's no doubt she works. She's honest, she's on her, and it's more and more looking like a people's advocate here. And I'm just very happy to hear that and to see that, and thank her very much. This is regarding Bill 23, that amends Chapter 19, Article 3, Section 19 of the Hawaii County Code as amended relating to reduction of the real property tax penalty and monthly interest for delinquent taxes. This is so fair. I mean, come on, the rates and everything are down low. This is, you know, if anybody ever fell into the unfortunate situation of getting behind, having someone sick, you know, this is really helpful, and this is a great thing. Thank you, Ms. Ford, for all of us. I certainly have no need of it at this point and hope I never will, but it's a, it's a good deed. Thank you. And we see Bill 24, relating to the Hawaii County Restricted Covenant deeds onto lands and easements acquired with funds from the Public Access Open Space and Natural Resources Preservation Fund. I've had mixed feelings on this, you know, law to begin with, but since the people did approve it, it's, this is the right thing to do. Make it so the lands are used and purchased as the people want. So thanks again. So there are many other things on there. Primarily, a lot of them are just, you know, bureaucratic, you know, issues relating to parking and titles and such as that and some finance. But that's the, I believe, are the key relevant issues in general. And thanks for listening, and we'll move on to the next topic. Now, to a community geothermal update dated 2/13 by Bob Patrici of the Punapono Alliance. One side note, although a lot of this does focus on geothermal truly, I really believe Bob and the Punapono Alliance and others, certainly Kerry Marx, Occupy Hawaii, et cetera, they're doing a great job really fighting the system for the people because there are a lot of systemic, frankly corrupt interests, okay, just going for their money at whatever pain and expense it may cause the population or any individual. So I see these people as heroes, and let's get into some of these things right now. So Bob says, on this medical H2S headline, medical H2S expert coming for Aki Bono Community Meeting, 2/9/13. And we're going to start, "Alert: Geothermal Fracking Is Coming to Hawaii." Just when you thought it couldn't get any worse. Okay. Now, actually, we're going to start with how Puna rocked the repeal Act 97 County Council hearing. Most of you probably heard, we had a good turnout for the repeal Act 97 at the County Council. I want to thank everyone that helped get the word out. It worked. Over 80 people signed up to testify. The council got their message, and the resolution passed by unanimous vote. We had drummers and dancers out in Pohona, and that really raised the awareness of what was going on, as everyone in the shopping center was talking about it. Thank you for supporting us. It really raised awareness in the community. The testimony given was excellent. I continue to be impressed with how well people in the community understand this issue. Harry Kim drove all the way to Kona just to look them in the eye when he testified. He drove back to Hilo, and they were still taking testimony, after which Brenda Ford called him back to talk about Act 97. And aside for a moment, you really have to give it to this man. Even if you don't like what he's doing, which I think if you really would follow, you really would like, here's a man, you know, really in the people's interest, standing up for us because those in power probably are not, or certainly are not all the time, even though they may be coming around to some things. And this man is great. This is selfless service, I believe, and I don't, I don't believe he has any personal interest in it, just like I don't either. I don't even live down in Lower Puna. This issue doesn't affect me. I just simply believe it's the right thing to be doing. And I support the people and their resistance of having violence, which is essentially what the state wants to perpetrate upon them, thrust upon them in the form of a dirty environment, okay, which is not zoned for what they were doing, and dropping an industrial environment and all the crony capitalism that goes along with it in there. So anyways, back to this. There was something that happened when the council broke for lunch that everyone should be aware of. There was a large police presence, including a helicopter, I was told. You would think the county had better things to do than to use a limited police resources and tax dollars on the people that are trying to participate in our government. It's at least $1,000 bucks an hour to fly one of those choppers, so let's go round them up. Yeah. I'm sure they deserved it, huh? But it gets worse. The really disturbing part is a great many people were prevented from testifying by the police who made them leave before they could speak to the council. I have to wonder if this is not a civil rights violation in preventing us from participating and from petitioning the government for redress. Now, this is nothing against any police because we all know they're ordered from above. They may be totally innocent, and then they may even have been not wanting to do this, but perhaps, okay? But this really does need to be thought out and addressed because testimony is pretty darn American, and as long as they're not violating anyone else's civil rights or the property owners haven't called to have them removed, this is really, they should have been left alone, I believe. And if this was a public, you know, building, or essentially, you know, certainly being rented for public use, there should be some accommodation made for this. Bob says, "I checked when a property is leased to a county agency, a portion in front of the building becomes public. I believe that the police were in error and subverted, whether intentionally or not. The community is right to be at our Pohona County Council Office." We brought this up with Gregor Ilagan already, as he is the one using our office right now. "We'll be raising this issue with a full council at the next available opportunity. Please do, Bob." Further down, I will be talking about what we've learned about geo-fracking in the last week. Okay, we're going to first, one of the leading experts on H2S health effects in the U.S. and maybe the world, Dr. K. Kilburn, is coming from the mainland to talk with the community you about H2S health impacts and his proposed health study. I think it may have been Kilburn, I'm sorry, I have a bad friend here. I'm sorry if I got somebody's name wrong. Dr. K. H. Kilburn, retired from the Ralph Edgington Professorship of Medicine at the University of Southern California. Let's say that eight, fast eight times. School of Medicine in 2006, has his career span of problem solving and respiratory failure, emphysema, et cetera. Licensed to practice medicine. Anyways, he's coming, okay, and there's more details. Of course, you can always go to the Punapono Alliance, and you should be able to click and get this email slash community update letter, and they're well worth it because, you know, even if you happen to not be neutral or even against this, I think you'll at least know what's happening, and that's a good thing. And if you're fair and listen, you might be changed, as I was, because I was originally actually for most of this until I started to know about the $850 million payoffs, the cronyism, and everything else going on. And, you know, just one other side note, I actually met one of the workers down at Punapono Alliance last week, great guy. And, you know, as you, if you've heard me and others, I actually think of some others, I'm not really against Punapono pers, excuse me, Pona geothermal venture per se, as long as it's not hurting the community, and I don't think any of us is, and we certainly like those jobs there, and we certainly recognize the immense investment that's been made. But, you know, you've got to be responsive to the community, and things have to be done truthfully, forthright, and the people need to be protected. And expansion and making this a full-on industrial zone down there just really doesn't seem to make sense for the people who bought into those lands and areas not expecting that. We don't need Oahu on this island. We really don't need it or want it. It's one of the last bits of Hawaii. I think most of us would agree about that. So anyways, Dr. Kilburn will be at the Aki Bono Theater in Pohona, February 9th, from 4 until 6:30. So there you go, 4 to 6:30. You can meet the people there, and it's a great thing to come out there. It's usually pretty packed, and it's great information. And Harry Kim will also be there, talking about what he's been doing. Here, he's been to Oahu four times, as well as Maui and Molokai since the last community meeting. He's helped us raise awareness and build support across the state. Punapono Alliance and Harry Kim have put geothermal development in Hawaii front and center at state legislature. We've, we have their attention, and now we need your continued support to make sure they are, they are listening. Harry Kim is an honest, decent government person. And I tell you honestly, he wasn't my first choice at this last, you know, mayor go-round, but I met with him, and I think he's a great guy, and I, and I would vote for him at any point at this, at this point. He's a great guy, and I think he's a real selfless individual here and doing good for the public. And we should listen to him because he really does have the awareness and knowledge here. I mean, he does have the experience to really know. And as he says, "A government done right," and I think that's what he wants, and that's what he's after. We will have a Punapono Alliance member speaking about enhanced geothermal systems. Fracking geothermal, as I am calling it, we're now learning about this, but here is some information. "Is fracking geothermal coming to Hawaii? All those people who think geothermal projects were going to be isolated to Lower Puna better sit up and take notice. Fracking geothermal could be coming to your neighborhood and affect your water, aquifer, and air. The cat is out of the bag. Hey, how about the sound? You know, just like they've gone over, "I really don't want to hear a low-frequency drill." And thank God Dominic and the council put that one in. A 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. is bad enough. That is bad enough. I mean, this is a residential zone, guys. Don't you guys get it out there in Oahu? There are people living here. We don't want to live like you guys with Harleys rolling down the canyon and the loudest place on earth, one of them. No, thank you. Our own Senator Russell Rutterman has hit a nerve by introducing an anti-fracking bill in SB 375. Go, Russell. You know, I gotta give it to him. I, you know, I'm not totally in alignment with Russell on all the political issues, but I think he's an honest man, and he's certainly doing a lot of stuff for the people. So, I mean, thank God. He is really, I've told him this, and I really believe it. He's like Luke Skywalker for us here back there. He's about our only hope. So thank you, Russell, and keep up the good work. Geothermal insiders and best in interest went after him for it. Oh, imagine that, you know, all the money, he's having to be, you know, you know, maybe a little bit worried because they don't have everybody paid off. There's an honest man somewhere there. Okay, so Dr. Ton Thomas and Milani Trask and Adarok Mainland Geo-Fracking Corporation go after Senator Rutterman hard for exposing their plan. Please, people, follow the money and understand what's going on. What they say is always one thing. Just keep in mind, the government usually puts someone in between to take the fall. They always come up with some BS. Whatever they call it, it's usually the opposite. Follow the money, and you'll see what's really happening. So again, also, Dr. Adler will be on February 10th, if you need to have some consultations or find out more. So please, go to the Punapono Alliance website, or email Bob or Barb Cartens at the email address indicated, or 808-833-94344. That's 808-339-4344. Okay, a bit of news on the Big Island Chronicle. This is Tiffany Edward Hunt's journal, and it's gone to print now. It's also available online. And in the December issue, which I hope you can still get, and I believe it's well worth getting, unfortunately, I got to it rather late, but it's about the homeless in Hawaii in depth look, nice in-depth coverage that you cannot and will not, and this is not even impugning any journalist for the corporate media, certainly the major one here. But this is something you're just not going to get elsewhere, and this is just great. It's a wonderful job Tiffany and crew and Alan. And they have a story about Abel Louis, who I happen to have known a little bit and spent some time with. And this is his eviction, okay, and he says Ka'ou is not for sale. I think if you follow it, and I have the footage, and I hope I can put it on sometime. You really need to follow the money on almost all of these things, and you will see that there is money at the root of this, and I don't just mean the simple property sitting there. I mean, big gigantic government interests, okay, and all the power players on Oahu wanting to squeeze this man out. And, you know, even if you can debate, and, you know, certainly maybe the claim was valid invalid, I personally believe he should have been left alone. You know, it's a small price to pay. The land should have been left alone, I believe. At any rate, it certainly points to the continuing oppression of native peoples, and, you know, I have a little bit of Native American Indian in me myself, and I definitely feel it. And my, you know, we have obviously the dominant civilization that stole this, you know, these islands from another. And, you know, it's a continuing, you know, story of the power, powerful, you know, lying, scheming, cheating, and stealing, and killing to get what they want, you know. Hopefully, you know, these local governments could be a little bit more enlightened and leave these people alone, at least a little bit. I mean, you know, does the world have to be absolutely monoculture, okay, in one Western way, you know, without any of the traces of our heritage of millions or at least hundreds, tens of thousands of years gone? How about a little kindness? I mean, this is really disappointing what happened here, and there's probably more sides to this story, I'm sure. And if anybody would like to come on and let us know, we'd certainly put it on there. But Abel seemed like a decent guy. We think he was trying to do decent things down there. Certainly, the people of Hawaii, the native peoples, should have a little respect, I think, to their culture and a little space to practice it. So very good job for the Big Island Chronicle bringing this up and covering it. Very well-written. We highly recommend this issue in particular, and of course, you know, reading and supporting the journal. An independent paper. We are not exactly in line with them politically, but we certainly appreciate their efforts and their honest work. Economics in 20 seconds. Okay, you have to produce, you have to borrow, you have to steal, you have to kill. That's the only thing you can do. Okay, that's really the only thing you can do. America's not producing nearly enough now, okay? We can't borrow anymore, that's going way away, okay? So we're stealing and killing. This is what's happening here, and that's what the troops are being used for, and it's to support a petrodollar, because here's the gig. The Federal Reserve and the owners of which are individuals and banks, okay, can print paper, which costs almost nothing, and get back a valuable commodity, petroleum, in return. Okay, so they're taking paper, because the government does not print the money. These private corporations do. They print the paper, they get the petrodollars, the petrodollars back because they're keeping, why they're freaked out about Iran, Iran is trying to get off the dollar. They're trying to trade without, with bypassing the dollar. And then once the petroleum is not traded in dollars, the whole charade goes, the whole thing falls because we're not producing anymore. This is, that's the nutshell of it. But back to the guns for a second, so let me finish this up, and we'll keep going. Pat, tell us what your thoughts are, okay? So it says, now this guy, this was, we're talking about Tucson, Tucson with, you know, the Gabrielle Giffords or whatever. This guy says, "This was a failure of the mental health system." We're back to the Washington Post, you know, article, okay? Pat and I have been going on about the mental health system a little, but, you know, maybe thoughts on that. He says, "How much freedom do we give up for security? It's not just about guns, it's about everything, every single thing we do." And a couple more quotes from this. It's going to be, these are the people who are trying to talk about getting this, you know, banned. "It's going to be easier this time because we have social media to help us, blah, 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 blah." Okay, and then since, when did automatic, automatically become a bad word? This is a Secret Service agent, he says, "You won't be able to pray hard enough for a gun in the hands of a good guy to get there fast enough to protect you." Okay? And let's go back to, and I'm going to dispute that right, right now. And so this is the last sentence and the last thought from this. "So why is the idea of a gun good when it's used to protect the president of our country or our police, but bad when it's used to protect our children in our schools?" Which leads to this, Pat. This is from the Libertarian Party, and this is, "Halt the massacre of innocent children by ending prohibition on self-defense in schools." This is dated December 16th, 2012. I'm just going to go to a couple highlights. Responsible gun owners can and do prevent mass shootings from occurring and escalating. In 1997, a high school shooting in Pearl, Mississippi was halted by the school's vice principal after he retrieved the Colt 45 decapitated his truck. In 1998, middle school shooting ended where a man living next door heard gunfire and apprehended the shooter with his shotgun. So 2002, a terrorist attack in an Israeli school was quickly dropped, it says, "In 2002, a terrorist attack in an Israeli school was quickly stopped by an armed teacher and a school guard. 2002 law, law school shooting in Grundy, Virginia came to an abrupt conclusion when students carrying firearms confronted the shooter. And 2007 mall shooting in Ogden, Utah ended with an armed off-duty police officer intervened. In 2009, workplace shooting in Houston was halted by two coworkers who carried concealed handguns. In 2012, church shooting in Aurora was stopped by a member of the congregation carrying a gun. And the recent mall shooting in Portland, Oregon, the gunman took his own life minutes after being confronted by a shopper carrying a concealed weapon." And this article's worth reading and going on. So Pat, your thoughts on that? And I guess we should probably begin to wrap it up, but your thoughts on gun control in general, the assault ban, anything else you'd like to say here?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it probably, I mean, on my opinion, I feel, gun control, number one, like I said, take it away from the people, they gotta use it to kill other people, yeah, only in war. You live in war. But at home, you take, you know, in schools, I would, my opinion is, if you got a detector that is one way in, one way out, can detect a weapon, you can do something.